A public hearing and hopefully adoption. At that point, it then gets transmitted, it gets submitted to Pine Lands because there are some land use changes. It gets sent to Pine Lands who will then review it administratively and then will give their informator. I'm sure they will be fine with it because none of these changes were dramatic. These were housekeeping measures, more so than anything else. So I would expect that you will probably have this new code implemented probably by the end of May. That's my guess. Did I do okay, Mrs. Cass?
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Just hearing you say it makes me feel very confident that 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 all is well. The other thing I wanted to say, though, is I have all the documentation for everything we did. So what the City Council Code Committee did, what Mr. Owen and I did. So if you have any questions, I'm going to send you my phone number and of course you have my email address. And I can explain how it came out the way it did if you if you have any concerns. So please feel free to let me tell you those things because I I can I. With a few questions the General Code had, I could say, well, this is what we said at this meeting and and everybody was was comfortable with it. So so please let me have a chance to tell you.
This is Casa Graham. I want to thank you and Mr. Owen and Mrs. Kent for all the work that you guys put into that to make this happen. I really appreciate that.
Oh, thank you so much. Yes, I just wrote to the to the attorneys yesterday that I miss Mrs. Kent because I shouldn't be in this at all anymore, but I'm of course I'm happy to to help. But she would have had this all under control and I wouldn't have been fussing two days with emails back and forth to the the poor attorneys that had to to deal with my fussing. But anyway, I think I'm very happy that we have them too, so.
Thank you again.
Anything else, Mrs. Casa Graham?
I don't think so.
Okay. Randy, we're concluding with this right?
Oh, except Mr. Mayor, you finally have your paper copy. You have five paper copies there right in the City Hall, so that'll be a a good thing to enjoy.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Moving down the line here, we have the bill list. Does anybody have any questions about the bill list?
No.
I have a comment about the Laurie bill from last month that I said I would look into. Do you have something to say about that, Mayor?
I do. I know that originally there was a movement to move forward to replace the boiler, which was nearly nine thousand dollars for the installation or excuse me, for the purchase of the equipment. And also
How much?
There would be an additional cost for the installation of it. I did intervene on this when I found out and my instinct told me that there was nothing wrong with the boiler. There was a repair that needed to be done. So we went from a nine thousand plus repair to a six hundred dollar repair.
Nine thousand, not ninety?
Nine thousand.
Okay.
It was going to cost nine thousand dollars, eighty-nine hundred and something to purchase the unit and then an additional amount of money to have it installed. And we had it repaired and it's running fine. That's all it needed was, I don't recall what the switch was that had to be taken out and replaced, but Jeff, maybe you know. But it was a simple repair, simple enough.
Three dollar part.
Three dollar part, our CFO says. There was a circulator that had to be replaced. That's it. It didn't need to have to replace the whole entire cell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for doing your still.
We saved a lot. We saved our we saved our city nine thousand dollars.
Well, I spoke with, as I said I would last month, I've spoken with Ted Laurie of Laurie Heating. At first, it was eighty-nine hundred dollars including insulation. That was a soup to nuts on a new year. Secondly, that as it relates to the warranty, the ten-year warranty exists on a Resnor space heater that we had installed in the ceiling in the Public Works Building in 2013. The Mc- Mc- Wheel McLean boiler that is bad in the basement only had five years parts and labor warranty and that had run out three years prior to this leak having occurred. The problem is that further for the two hundred and forty dollars they want, I think it's two hundred and forty-nine dollars that they want for the technician coming out, he had to restore the relief valve so that it would stop leaking and shut off the gas and something else. And so as far as Laurie's concerned, their bill is justified. Otherwise, they weren't willing to make a repair to the controls because so many so much of the controls was wet. Their fear is that any repair won't hold up and that over time and and not that long a period of time will end up replacing a lot of the controls and other things because that's what water that kind of damage that water does to electronics. And they weren't willing to take the chance on doing a repair and having it stand up for an extended period of time. That's why they their quote was to replace the boiler in Toto and 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 why they didn't see it as being covered under any warranty. I'm not saying that I agree with them or disagree with them, but that's their explanation. So I would my my conclusion would be that we should pay the bill. And we should be prepared for a new boiler just in case they're right.
Well, we did pay the bill. That was on the bill list last month.
We we even paid Laurie bill. But that was for a bill in October.
I see. I didn't know that the Laurie bill was held.
Yeah, I didn't pay it.
So did you even submit it to on our bill list?
No.
No, so that's why I don't know about it because it was never submitted.
Right, because Mr. Dilch was going second down.
Okay.
We discussed it at last month's meeting.
Very good. Moving forward here. So there was no questions about the bill list. Somebody make a motion, please.
Well, wait a minute. Are we going to add this bill to the bill list?
Add which bill? Mr. Dilch, add which one for the amount of dollars?
Laurie Heating bill for two hundred and forty-nine dollars dated whenever it was dated, the twenty-first of November, I guess, something like that.
Two hundred and forty-nine even?
Yes.
They performed a service. Obviously, we have to pay for it, so I don't have any problem with paying for it. I don't have it on my bill list here, though. Even on even on the submitted bill list, I don't have it on here, but it's okay.
It's not because they're just they're just approved.
Right. Okay, so we'll have to add that on to the bill list for the total amount.
We will need also to to inquire. Don't we have a service agreement with Laurie for this boiler? Or is that only for air conditioning?
I'm not sure that we have a service agreement with them. It may not be a bad idea to have it under a service agreement. We have an inspection done on it once a year normally. They do come out and do a service inspection of each year.
If we have it covered under specifically under a service agreement, we need to see how that may be changed or impacted by us not taking their guidance on the heater.
So who's taking who's who's taking care of that, then?
Sounds like the mayor is.
Yeah.
I make a motion then to pay the bill list of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and five cents. Do I have a second?
Is that the correct amount, Mrs. Owen? Judge, show me something different.
I'm a banker.
Great.
Okay, well, once I I added the two forty-nine together, it comes to two fifty-three, two forty-six, fourteen. Did you get that, Mr. Owen, or no?
She said two fifty-two.
No, I said two fifty-two, one eighty-five.
All right.
What's the correct amount?
Let me read that. I have the the bill list at two forty-nine, eight forty-seven, fourteen. There was a bill that I had to pay Ms. Blumenthal last for November, December. After the meeting was three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and then Laurie Heating, two forty-nine. Comes to two fifty-three, two forty-six, fourteen.
Maybe I have a do I have the was there bills added to the bill list that was sent to us?
Uh, yeah, I gave you an updated copy.
When?
When?
The only one, the only two, uh, I can go over that now also because that that hasn't been brought up. I'm sorry. Joe Montso Municipal Consulting, that's for seminar that I would like to take for fifty dollars. Municipal Clerks Association for dues of a hundred. Treasurer State of New Jersey for unemployment going back to June thirtieth of last year, four thousand, four sixty-nine, fifty-one. And by the way, that bill was cut in half. It was eight thousand dollars. But because of the COVID and money that the state has, they they cut those bills in half. And then Mr. Cardenato for mileage, thirty-nine dollars and fourteen cents. So if you add all that, you know, to regular bills, two forty-nine, eight forty-seven, fourteen, three thousand, one hundred and fifty, two forty-nine, total comes to two fifty-three, two forty-six, fourteen.
Yeah, I'm I'm still not getting that. So I have the bill list at two hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-four cents. I have Jennifer's thirty-one fifty. I have the unemployment for forty-four, sixty-nine, fifty-one. I have the seminar and the other bill for a hundred and fifty total. And then the two forty-nine. Yeah, I'm not coming up with that same amount. But we'll go with yours. What what's your amount, then?
Uh, two fifty-three, two forty-six, fourteen.
One second. I I'm sorry for holding everybody up. So you put a hundred and fifty dollars in, two hundred and forty-four thousand, five sixty-five, three thousand, one hundred and fifty, forty-four, four thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents and two hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Okay, what what did you come up with?
For adding the two adding the other hundred and fifty, I'm getting two fifty-two, five eighty-four, oh, five.
Okay, you got your calculator there. Put in two fifty-three, two forty-six, fourteen and see what that is, Mr. Owen. Maybe I can track it back one one for you.
That's four ninety-nine, fourteen. So two fifty-three, two forty-six, fourteen, plus minus, two fifty-two, four thirty-four, point oh five. I have a difference of eight hundred, twelve dollars and nine cents.
Okay, what what you need? If you could go to Google Docs and look down at the bottom on the newest bill list. There should have been one there for tonight. If not, it didn't go through, but I I did send it out. That's the one that I'm working on.
And you must have, yeah, you must add in a couple other. Yeah, you add. There's a bunch of other things that were not there before. Okay, so I apologize. I I didn't see that one.
That's all right. That's all right.
Um, I I apologize for holding everybody up.
No, no problem. So the bill list is two fifty-three, two forty-six, fourteen.
Yes, that's exactly what I got. So I make a motion to pay the bill list of two hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-six, um, two hundred and forty-six dollars and fourteen cents. Do I have a second?
Second. Go ahead, please.
Yes, Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Vanessia?
Yes. Moving down the line here, we have the minutes of the January fourth, twenty twenty reorganization. The only correction that I have, and I apologize, I didn't, I don't recall the state trooper's name. He wasn't a patrolman and I certainly don't believe that this is his name that's here.
Probably not, but I I did the best I could with his name. I
Is that, yeah. I mean, why don't we just simply amend the the report to save representative from the
State Police Department.
A sergeant from the State Police Department, the assistant station commander was here.
Yes, I'll do that.
I believe he did identify himself as the assistant station commander.
Something like that, yeah.
Not Caruso, but some kind of a name would see. Yeah, I didn't I don't recall what it was, but
Okay, go on. I'll make that change.
Does anyone else have any other changes or additions to the minutes of the January sixth meeting?
I see that.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any vote? Got that, Judge? Okay. Next, moving down. We have a media past employee of ours, Mr. Jeff Cornu. Quite frankly, Jeff, you have served our city rather very, very well. We spent a lot of time together during emergency situations that we've had. I would like to issue a proclamation at this time on behalf of the City of Eston Manor, thanking you for your dedicated years of service, your hard work, your guidance, your wisdom. Everything that you have done for the city has really benefited our community as a whole. You are very level-headed, very, very easy to work with, very calm during emergency situations. And you really did the job extraordinarily well. I know that it's a lot of paperwork. I know that it's a lot of aggravation with some of the stuff. Nonetheless, Mr. Cornu, you certainly perceived and you've served our community well. With that being said, I would like to issue a plaque of appreciation on behalf of the City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
That's a pretty great opportunity to serve the City of Eston Manor.
Justice for the man.
Jeff, right there. There he is.
I'd like to thank Mayor, Council, past Council for the opportunity to serve. And also my I would like to thank my deputies, Charles Ellenbart, Joe Moweney, and John Barber. And also all the volunteers that helped you through all the analysis. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Thank you, Jeff.
You have to look. About the City of Eston Manor. Take this log and take this plaque. You'd like to show it to the screen so everybody can see what you have.
Thank you. Very nice.
You're trouble now with Kathy.
Jeff, I'd like you to, you've already said you'll continue to stay on as our deputy. Please stay engaged with the community. You still have a wealth of knowledge. Don't take it home with you and store it away for a rainy for a rainy day, but you know. I I trust that you're going to help our new guy, Jay.
Yeah, I'd be glad to help Jay.
Jay's looking forward to working with you. He's got a lot to learn, but I'm sure that under your guidance and tutelage, he's going to do real well. Jay's a smart guy and I'm sure that you guys will work together well and you'll be able to assist him so that he can, um,
Yes.
be as good as you were. And he's got some tough shoes to fill, but I'm sure he's up to the challenge.
He does my best. Thank you.
Thank you, Gavin. Moving on down the line here, we have a public presentation. We have Mr. Jeff Day. Jeff, where'd you go? I see you.
Here I am, here I am, Mayor.
Jeff, we had a conversation with Randy Lafferty, our city solicitor. And we had Edwin Growsky from the Pine Lands Commission. Randy issued a memorandum of the meeting that we took place. I read it. I thought it was rather very detailed and prepoint on fact what was said. I did in fact send you a copy just to make sure that we're all on board. So what I'd like you to do is take us to where we have been, where we are headed. We do have a one final environmental study that the Pine Lands is looking for us to do. But I do recall that the last conversation you and I had, Jeff, that there's some recoverable money that's out there in a grant. So I don't know if you have all that information, but I certainly hope that you do. So kind of get give us a presentation of where we are and what's next to be done.
Okay, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. And Solicitor Lafferty, nice to see you. We spoke on the phone. So, yeah, just a a short recap. I won't go all the way back, but we we did start working on this in in two thousand and six, which is a long, long time ago. And we received a remedial action work plan approval. The first several steps of our work were covered under an HDSRF grant program issued through the NJDEP and the EDA. And that's what we'll talk about, where we may have some applicability there for for work going forward as well. At that point, when the department approved that plan, we then had to go to the Pine Lands Commission. That's when some of our issues started. And have been performing various supplemental investigations into the in the landfill as requested by the Pine Lands Commission in spite of the DEP's approval of our of our other activities. We more recently, um, we we had a meeting last February and that's myself and and the Mayor and Councilman Dilch with Edwin Growsky where we went over the status. And that was to him to present a verbal presentation of their review of some of the more recent work and all of the past work. And that was supplemented in an email follow-up with with a memo from Edwin Growsky that he shared with us shortly thereafter in February, next couple of days. I think the memo is dated February tenth or so. I think that was perhaps a draft and we kind of went through that during the meeting. I got a call at the beginning of January and the Mayor said to us a bunch of questions and about where we were. And I I sent the Mayor and Council an email about that in the beginning of January. And subsequent to that, we had the conversation with Edwin Growsky that the Mayor referenced again, which kind of went over for the solicitor's benefit as well as just making sure we're still on the same page with relative to to where we are with the project. And I should back up. After the meeting in last February, we did submit a proposal just outlining the work that we had projected would need to be required to get all the way through the process with both the Pine Lands Commission and the DEP to get to a closed landfill with both the solid waste Department and the DEP and the and the site remediation group at the DEP. And some of those costs are potentially eligible for for HDSRF grant funding as well. So the memo that the Mayor referenced is is fairly accurate. There's a couple of nuances in it, but we don't need to get into those details unless, but it outlines pretty closely what the process is. There's just a couple of detailed steps in between and 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 toward the end with each of the each of the agencies with the DEP really. The the Pine Lands Commission process is laid out pretty almost right on point. And so so that's where we are. The the HDSRF, our proposal, which I'm happy to go through, I I, you know, proposals always come with some sticker shock sometimes, particularly on projects like this. What the Pine Lands Commission has asked us to do at this point is an ecological evaluation. We had done an ecological evaluation as part of our remedial action work plan submittal for the landfill itself. This is focused on the down gradient wetland areas. There really are very, very low concentrations of, they're not even direct contaminants. They're sort of cations and anions, if you will, and some some other chemical compounds within the down gradient plume, very typical for an old municipal landfill like this. And the presumptive remedy in both the state EPA and Pine Lands Commission is to put an imperial cap on top of the landfill. In this instance, it doesn't make any sense. The the landfill waste itself is in kind of direct contact with groundwater in some locations and most of the biological degradation within the landfill has already occurred. So, you know, any contaminants that were in there would have leached out. Most of them have degraded over time in a very natural process. These landfills become bioreactors as the different wastes are in there and they chemically and biologically degrade within the in the landfill. So the plan going forward would be to complete that ecological evaluation as Solicitor outlined in his memo and submit those results to the Pine Lands Commission. They may or may not submit them to the DEP. We would submit them as part of our final closeout documents to the department. But really, the Pine Lands Commissioners who were seeking approval for, again, really of our two thousand and twelve DEP-approved remedial action work plan, which is essentially to pretty much leave the landfill as is. We will need to evaluate the stormwater and stormwater management both for the Pine Lands Commission rules and regulations as well as the DEP rules and regulations. But we think that the the landfill can be left pretty much as is. One of the bigger ticket items in the proposal in Task B is a topographic and outbound survey of the landfill. If one of those exists somewhere, that would be great. I don't know, is Mike, is the engineer still on the call on the meeting?
No.
Okay. I could certainly reach out to Fraylinger and see if they they have that. We I think we've done that in the past and I believe the answer is no, but it's probably back to, I think, way back when, early two thousands, Remington and Vernick was perhaps involved in the landfill. So we're happy to to roll up our sleeves and and, you know, see how we can get this done. The the eligibility for the grant funding is really focused on ecological evaluation because that is really, as defined by the DEP, additional remedial investigative work, which under the HDSRF program, and HDSRF, just for everybody that says ready, Hazardous Discharge Site Remediation Fund. Municipalities are mostly the eligible ones for the for those grant funds. And the preliminary assessment, or you might be familiar with that, is called Phase One. The site investigation or medium investigation tasks are typically eligible for one hundred percent grants on this project since this particular site and and the city has been eligible in the past, there is eligibility. I did speak with the representative at the DEP, Michael Dealey, who runs the H or is in charge of the HDSF program in Atlantic County. A predecessor to him, or actually somebody that worked under him, was the one that, that's how long ago it was, provided the earlier grants. He wasn't completely familiar. He's looking at it right now, along with Ron Rongrowski, who's referenced in the Pine Lands memo and has been involved in the project all the way along. Ron is in the office. Both of these gentlemen are in the Office of Brownfield Reuse. That's the group at the DEP that manages this HDSRF program. And they have not gotten back to me in writing, but again, I've submitted that. And then we would need to just submit an application to them, which is really, you know, paper and some resolutions from the governing body as well as proposals, contracts and details of the pricing estimate. That's basically a summary of where I think we are at this point.
I could ask you, Jeff, what would you say is the percentage of the project that's left that would actually in fact be reimbursable?
Right.
You said that the HDSRF would fund the ecological evaluation portion of it. So what would you say is the percentage of the paperwork that you put together for what you think is going to cost to take care of this job? What is a percentage of that? I'm not going to hold you exactly to the
Sure, Mayor. And Councilman Owens, you're you're the banker, right? Maybe you can help me out. I'll give you some numbers. So again, in our proposal, the ecological evaluation, which, you know, the summary, when we prepare this, I'm happy to to provide a detailed breakdown of this this proposal as well, is fifty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars. Task B is hang on a second, let me get to that number there, is forty-three thousand dollars and change. But thirty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars of that is the is the survey. I would classify the survey work also as, you know, part of the remedial investigation data gathering. So at a minimum, those those two dollar items, I think, would be eligible for the grant funding. What's not eligible is remedial action work. And the other work in here, although it's reporting and a lot of it is paperwork and, you know, et cetera, planning and engineering, it it's considered to be the remedial action when you're putting the landfill closure plan together and so forth. So those costs would would likely not be eligible. But, you know, fifty fifty-one thousand plus thirty-six thousand is a pretty good chunk, you know, over sixty percent of this this particular number.
So the city would actually in fact be responsible for the forty-three thousand dollar amount, which is Task B, is what you're saying?
No, no. Of that forty-three thousand, thirty-six thousand No, no. Of that forty-three thousand, uh, thirty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven is the surveying portion of it. Direct surveying work. So that ought to be recoverable along with the full cost of the Task A.
That would be thirty-six, that would be thirty-six plus fifty-one.
Right. Uh, so forty-three minus the thirty-six, uh, whatever that number, and then the twenty-five, uh, and the, uh, uh, project management costs on there for four thousand, six hundred and thirty-six.
So we're talking